Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Let's start with the roll call.
Councilman Daley?
Here.
Councilman Leonard?
Here.
Councilman Pavesky? Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Bill Coram, thank you.
Thank you. We had a closed session and our attorney will give us a report.
The city council was in closed session. Actually, there was only one item. Item number one I, the performance evaluation of the city manager was completed at the last meeting and we did not need to do that tonight. Item A two was a conference with labor negotiators regarding city manager's new contract. And with regards to that item, the council received a report from the negotiator on behalf of the council who had previously met with the city manager. And a recommendation for approval of a new contract was received by the city council. And the formal action on that will come later on in the agenda tonight, which is item number thirteen. No further action to report.
Thank you. We will now have our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by not Mayor Prottempery, but Councilman Leonard. The agenda keeps appointing you. We'll have to wait for the next meeting for the... Okay, please stand.
Father, heavenly, thank you for your watch care over us and your love for us. We pray that you're spiritual to hear in this meeting that you will help us come to the conclusions that we can come to for the best good of this city. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go out of order at this meeting. We're going to start with a successor agency. And on that agenda, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any non-agenda items relative to the successor agency? Hearing none, we'll go to item number one. The demands register... Well, we'll do the consent calendar, but there's some special issues with offer of dedication of land.
Yes, sir. On this particular item is, you would like to request that the successor agency dedicate a part of land on area D as part of Park Avenue east of Brenmore, that's item number three, to the city so that the city can use that as a street improvement. And number four is a similar thing, which is dedicate the part of Brenmore in the special plan, planning area D and dedicate that to be accepted by the city. So have to dedicate it first and then the city will accept it afterward.
Okay, it's on the consent calendar, which seems... That's acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. So the consent calendar is there for your motion? Turn your microphone on.
When you say dedicating, does that mean we're actually giving the land to whom?
To the city. So right now...
Oh, from the successor agency?
To the city, yes. And if you look at the map, there's a street...
I saw that. So it's a little more than just giving them right away. We're actually giving the land?
Correct.
Is that the correct interpretation?
It says right away.
Yeah, it's a right away, but...
So it is simple, right away. It's not really deeding the land to the city, so to speak.
It will be, when we actually do the tract map, and the tract map will pretty much say that, yes, this has become a public right of way and for roadway purposes and utility purposes and so forth.
Did I second?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? I don't hear any, so the consent calendar is approved unanimously. And that brings us to the adjournment of the successor agency agenda. Now we will go back to the city council. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Are there any comments from the public on any non-agenda items? No takers, okay? Then we will come back to item number one. Update from the San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District Board from former Mayor Harrison.
Thank you, Attorney.
A little close.
Members of the council, it's a privilege to be in this room again at any time. I love this place. Before I... I'm Milford Harrison, member of the Board of San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District. I've been a member for... I was appointed about two years ago to take the place of, after the untimely death of Manny Aranda, who I never knew, but I'm sure many people in this room did. Before I begin, I'd like to ask you a question and Jarb and the chief barred from answering this. I was wondering if any of you know how much one cubic foot of water weighs because it's relevant to what I'm going to be saying?
I can come close.
Okay.
It's about sixty-four pounds?
You're very close. You're very close. Sixty-two point four pounds.
I could get it exact if you wanted.
I may... I call fix on that. I saw them talking together outside before they came in here.
No, I knew it was about eight gallons.
Well, I was surprised to find out that a cubic foot has seven point four eight gallons in it. I always thought that a cubic foot was about maybe two or three gallons. It was a surprise to me. The new motto of the San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District is helping nature store our water. We've just adopted that in the last few months and I think it's much more descriptive of what we do than what we had before. To accomplish this, the district captures rain, snow melt, and state water project water and percolates it slowly into the Bunker Hill Basin, which is underneath all of us, by means of seventy ponds on nearly four thousand acres. The district either owns or operates, or leases, I'm sorry. As you know, we are in a twenty-year drought and this basin storage is critical for us to be able to endure such droughts. In nineteen oh nine, following a similar drought, a conservative association, Conservation Association, was formed by the local ranchers to protect their interests and their water supply for their crops. In nineteen thirty-nine, the Board of Supervisors actually formed the Water Conservation District. And since nineteen twelve, the ranchers and the district have conserved over one million square feet, three hundred and twenty-six billion gallons of water from the Santa Ana River and Mill Creek. In addition, over ninety-two thousand acre feet, about thirty billion gallons of imported water has been stored. The district's current boundaries encompass seventy-eight square miles, including two hundred and sixteen thousand residents. The district's sphere of influence encompasses four hundred and thirteen square miles and six hundred and sixty-five thousand residents. The district is divided into five districts with Loma Linda being the third district, of which I have the privilege of being the director. Regular measurements are kept as to how much water is added to the basin and how much is taken out. The amount of total storage has been estimated, but not accurately measured. Last Thursday, however, the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District, along with the water master parties, approved a one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar contract to study how current storage levels compare to the bottom of the basins in our area or total usable storage. Because of well monitoring, we pretty well know how far under the land surface the water levels start, but we do not know how these levels actually compare with the bottom or total usable storage. The study should also tell, this study should also tell what new wells and facilities of any would be needed to access greater, deeper groundwater if basin levels were to continue to decline. In addition to the capture and storage of water, the district is also charged with the protection of land, native plants, and wildlife in the acres they manage. The area, this area is below Seven Oaks Dam, ranging from Mentone and Redlands on the south to Highland on the north and downstream to Orange Street on the west. We establish and manage habitat conservation areas to protect and support these species. Hundreds of acres are permanently preserved and dedicated for these species. We have also established the San Bernardino Valley Water, or San Bernardino Valley Conservation Trust. This is a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt trust which holds the habitat conservation easements and builds continuous care endowments with the easement fees that are collected. Just so you're aware, there are five major endangered species within the area that the water district holds. That's the woolly star, the slender crowned spine flower, the infamous San Bernardino kangaroo rat, and the coastal California gnat catcher and the cactus wren.
You don't do the flower-loving Delhi sands?
No.
Flower-loving fly?
That's Colton's problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, which they are just beginning to solve, I think, and they're going to put a new development in there. We are also in the process of designing and planning implementation of public access trails at certain points within the conservation district areas in conjunction with the cities of Highland and Redlands. And the important thing from a Loma Linda resident perspective and mine is that this plan will also include an interconnect with the Santa Ana River Trail to the ocean. The Santa Ana River Trail Committee met this morning and there is a real push to complete environmental processing to be able to use eight million dollars in grants which have been awarded for the segment of the trail between Orange and Opel Streets. The problem is, if these studies are not completed and certified by February, the grant will be withdrawn. I was at the meeting this morning and every agency involved in this effort was represented at the meeting and they all committed to make this happen. I, for one, made an impassioned plea that they do that because for thirty-five years I have heard about and been involved with various parts of the Santa Ana River Trail and all that time have been hoping that I could ride my bike out of my garage and all the way to the ocean. And we're making progress.
Without running over homeless people?
Yes. Well, yes. That's certainly an Orange County problem, but I think they're managing that. An additional source of revenue for the district, which helps us maintain the lowest possible pumping charges for our partners, is mining and removal of various forms of aggregate. The mined materials range from the finest sand to massive multi-ton boulders. These are used in all types of building, landscaping, road building, and many other projects. The district also makes use of some of the boulders to block vehicle access to the many protected areas that we manage. Because of the significant fluctuation in water availability, a significant organization has been formed. Eleven of the basin water producers, along with the San Bernardino Valley Municipal Water District and the Conservation District, have, as you know, formed the Groundwater Council, of which Loma Linda is a partner. The goal is to assure the availability, the ability to supply the needs of our customers now and in the future. All but two of the original thirteen partners, Redlands and the West Valley Water District, have executed the agreement to develop funding to purchase supplemental supplies adequate to ensure a sustainable water supply into the foreseeable future. This is a major accomplishment and something that we should all take comfort in, if nothing else. Over the last two years, I have learned much more about the extremely complicated involved science of the provision of water. But mainly, I have learned how much I have yet to learn and how little I really know. I am trying very hard to expand my knowledge and understanding. And if you have any questions this evening, you will see how limited my knowledge really is. However, I do know who to ask if I don't have the answer. One of those with the answers is the newly-elected vice president of the Groundwater Council and is also your city manager. Thank you.
I do have a question, just to make you earn your keep.
If you didn't, I would be disappointed, Ron.
I've been asked by several people about the, what they are perceiving as a state mandate that could occur, that there will be a limit of fifty-five gallons per resident. And they're asking how they know, you know, how's the state going to determine that? How many residents are in a house? And is that actually going to hap... Can you update us on that?
Not really. I know it's, that is part of the discussion.
Because Jarb may know more about that. It's beginning to enter the...
I'm sorry?
It's beginning to enter the dialogue of regular people.
Absolutely.
And I don't have good answers for them.
I had quite a discussion about that yesterday with our general manager. And the interesting thing is that the water usage average just in this valley differs so greatly. In Loma Linda and Redlands, it's about two hundred gallons. And in Mentone, it's, I mean, then on the other side of San Bernardino, it's eighty, eighty gallons.
Per person, per day?
Yes.
I mean...
So that's a huge difference.
I've got a son that probably uses two hundred gallons a day on his own, but...
It really follows economic areas.
And is this, what's the probability this is going to happen and what's the timetable?
Well, I can't tell you for sure. I mean, the answer is, it is being discussed and it is certainly being debated at this point. I don't know if Jarb has any more on that than I do, but it is...
People are beginning to stress out over this. And, you know, I don't have any good answers for them, so I was hoping we can get some.
Well, I'm definitely looking forward to the results of this study.
Yeah.
To see as nearly as we can determine.
And what's the timetable?
What we have down there. I think it's four months.
Okay.
It's a GeoSciences Corporation is the one that got the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh. Thanks.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How many water molecules are in one acre foot of water?
Somehow I knew you would do that.
He's got his iPhone out. He's working hard to stump you.
Yes. He just did it.
Four point one two one times ten to the thirty-first.
I see. Thank you very much. I do know that there is...
Yes. And you have to know, oh, a simpler question. What's the atomic weight of water?
Don't know.
You're on the wild...
I do know that there are two million seven hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven pounds of water in an acre foot. Thanks a lot.
This is what's awaiting me when I'm an emeritus mayor. Derision from the current council.
Can I pose the same question?
You don't have to wait for that. We can start that now. Thank you for that report. It's very nice and very informative. Okay, next we have our consent calendar.
Can I move it?
Okay, there's a motion and there's a second. Is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. We have old business, Council Bill R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five, Public Works.
Yes, sir. This is the request that the city council adopt a council bill number R two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five for order annexation number seventy for the landscape maintenance to approved assessment for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen for the landscape of Barton Road median in front of the Heart and Surgical Hospital.
This looks like a familiar item.
Yes.
Yeah, and we've discussed this multiple times.
At the last city council meeting, there was an air for the property owner to respond to the ballot and it's supposed to be yes, and she marked no, so...
So do we have anybody from the property owner here?
Yes, Curtis here.
Can you tell us what we're doing so that we have confidence that this is going to be resolved?
Was it a butterfly ballot and you were confused?
I'm not sure why you'd know it was March, but the next day I went in, provided appropriate ballot, and it marked yes. But I guess you guys are receiving the other one.
Yeah.
So we have another document that verifies that it marked yes.
Has the Supreme Court decided? Okay.
So does the city clerk have the documentation you need?
But we have to, don't we make the motion?
It's attached to the staff report. So it'd be a motion to adopt the council bill.
And then you read the ballots?
There is no ballot. Because the ballots were read, there is a document attached to the staff report, the second page, that corrects that and is signed by the university.
Okay. So now the ballots are four and two against and two for, so that's a tie.
Now, we need to correct Harton Surgical is now Surgical Hospital.
Okay, I will make that correction and both ballots are voted yes. Thank you.
Okay.
So what's your pleasure?
So to the city manager, how soon can we clean that out? Because I've been by there multiple times since we discussed this two weeks ago and it's not getting any better.
Next Monday, sir. I will let my staff know tomorrow and get a contract to jump on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Curtis can move a little faster. He'd be happy to.
So I will move Council Bill R dash two zero one eight dash two five.
So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? I hear none, so we have unanimous vote to approve item ten. So congratulations. Your weeds are in our hands.
And we appreciate working with us on this because that's one of the main entrances to our city. And when there's two-foot weeds rampant in that median, it's not a good welcome message.
Well, we had this conversation in December. I'm sorry it's taken this long, but at least we finally resolved it.
Right, right. Thank you. Thank you.
And my comment is that everybody is biased. One man's weed is another man's cultivar. I think they're beautiful plants. Okay, item eleven.
For the mayor, some people think that gophers are wonderful little animals to have around as well. And I know you have personal experience with gophers.
I have quite a collection. I have plenty to go around. So Council Bill O dash two thousand eighteen dash zero two, second reading, Public Works.
Yes, this is the request that the city council approve mandatory commercial recycling and commercial organic waste recycling. And this is the second reading. It's now mandated for the commercial to do it, that's all.
Would you say it's not mandated?
No, it is mandated.
It's for multifamily and commercial. And these are, these are to bring us in compliance with state law, right? Yeah. The trash man, he's the water man and the trash man, is nodding yes. It's to bring us in compliance with state law.
Yes, yes. Yes, this is state law, AB three forty-one, that was adopted in two thousand eleven.
Yeah, and because it's an ordinance, it requires two readings and a roll call vote and then there's a thirty-day wait before it's in force? Yeah. I finally figured it out after twelve years.
So in the interest of moving the agenda along, I'll move Council Bill zero dash two thousand eighteen dash O two.
And would the motion include waiving, reading, and read by number and title only?
I'm sorry?
Read by title only and waive reading the entire bill?
Correct.
Okay.
You're just including that in your motion?
Okay. I'm looking for the title, for the bill title, but not clear what it is.
She'll read it to us.
Okay.
So is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, there's a second. Madam Clerk?
It's titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda to Update and Amend Municipal Code Section eight point one-two to Address Mandatory Recycling Requirements, AB three forty-one for Multifamily and Commercial Business Recycling and Organic Recycling Requirements, AB eighteen twenty-six." You may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve, Specific Plan Zone Map Amendment, second reading and roll call vote.
You want me to just read it?
You can.
All right. Then we'll talk about it then. So Specific Plan Zone Map Amendment, number eighteen dash zero four nine, Specific Plan Zone Map Change and Amendment, number seventeen dash one ninety-three, Zone Map Change Amendment, number eighteen zero five zero, second reading and roll call vote. This is Council Bill number zero two, twenty eighteen zero three, second reading and roll call vote, The Groves at Loma Linda amending the East Valley Corridor's specific plan boundary and concurrent zone map, zone change amendment to change the zone for that same area for the East Valley Corridor's specific development to plan community from the East Valley Corridor institutional to institutional healthcare. In addition, approving a zone map change and zone change amendment to change the zone for approximately twenty-five, twenty-seven point five acres referred to as Redlands Unified School District future middle school site from single-family residential to institutional healthcare. Also, Council Bill number zero, twenty eighteen dash zero four, second reading and roll call vote, The Groves at Loma Linda amending the official zone map and zoning code or the City of Loma Linda to approve The Groves at Loma Linda's specific plan and approving a zone map amendment to establish an estimated, to establish an approximate three hundred area coincident with the boundary, the special planning area D at The Groves at Loma Linda's specific plan area. And Council Bill number zero, twenty eighteen dash zero five, second reading and roll call vote, The Groves at Loma Linda amending previous zone map amendment change number fifteen dash zero eight seven, also known as the Citrus Trails Master Plan Development, to integrate the master plan as part of The Groves at Loma Linda's specific plan and amend certain aspects of the Citrus Trails' master plan to become consistent with and direct its future implementation through The Groves of Loma Linda's specific plan.
Okay, the motion is there for one of you to take up, which is to approve the second reading and call for a roll call vote on those three bills. And to, is that the entire text of the bills?
That is...
So we don't have to waive a reading? You read it?
Well, it has all been read. So that is the text. We don't have to waive it.
That was the title.
That was the title.
So the entire bill has got a lot of...
So you still need to waive reading of the ordinance, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So a waiver of the reading of the ordinance and by title only, which has already been read, and then a roll call vote. So that's the motion that we're looking for.
and then a roll call vote. So that's the motion that we're looking for.
Second. And my motion includes Council Bill O two zero one eight zero three, Council Bill O two zero one eight zero four, and Council Bill O two zero one eight O five, as read by the Assistant Manager, Mr. Conrad.
Just for clarification, we've got number twelve, and then we've got A B C.
Yeah, we're doing the whole thing.
We're doing the whole thing at the same time.
Yes.
Did you want me to do it each item?
Well, we usually do ordinances separately, if the clerk's more comfortable. And I wasn't following that closely. Did we get the title correctly, Barbara?
I can go ahead and read just the exact title of the ordinance. He read the description on the end.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and amend my motion that we move just one at a time. Council Bill O two zero one eight dash zero three, Second Reading and Roll Call Vote, waived reading of the ordinance and by title only.
It's entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Amending the East Valley Corridor's specific plan boundary along parcels south of Redlands Boulevard and generally between California Street and Enterprise Drive, and amending the official zoning map of the City of Loma Linda from East Corridor specific plan, specific district, and public institutional to planned community and institutional healthcare, and from single-family residential to institutional healthcare. Specific Plan Amendment, Zone Map Change Amendment, Number eighteen dash zero four nine." And you may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
That was the culmination of a lot of work. And we've got two more to do, so who's going to move the second one?
I'll move Council Bill Number zero dash two zero one eight dash zero four. And what was wording? Waive reading and title only? Is that how we say it?
Close enough.
I'll second that.
It's entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Adopting the Groves at Loma Linda's specific plan and amending Chapter seventeen point four four, Special Purpose Zones of the Loma Linda Municipal Code Title seventeen to Establish the Grove's specific plan as the Development Regulations for Special Planning Area D. It is Zone Change Map Amendment, Zone Code Amendment Number seventeen dash one nine three." And you may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, Council Bill O dash two thousand eighteen dash zero five, would someone take up the motion?
I will move it. Council Bill Zero dash two thousand eighteen dash O five.
And read, or waive reading of the entire bill and by title only. You're accepting title only, correct?
Correct.
It's titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Amending the Previous Zone Map Amendment Change Number fifteen dash zero eight seven, AKA Citrus Trails' Master Plan and Plan Development Overlay to Integrate the Master Plan as part of the Groves of the Groves of Loma Linda's specific plan and amending certain aspects of the Citrus Trails' master plan to become consistent with and direct its future implementation through the Groves at Loma Linda's specific plan. Zone Change Map Amendment Number eighteen dash zero five zero." And you may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Now we've approved these, this is kind of the thirty-five-thousand-foot view of this project. As there are individual developers that develop their specific plans that would fit under this umbrella, do those come back to the City Council?
Yes, each, what this does is basically is define the land use and the densities and how things are situated on there. What's going to come back then is when specific developments, either to you or to Planning Commission, dependent on the development, elevations, amenities, site plans, lots, the lots, divisions, parking, all that stuff.
What about issues such as HOA fees and gated communities and that kind of?
All of that will come back again yet.
Come back here?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, item number thirteen, City Manager's Contract. City Attorney, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you is an amended employment agreement between the city and the city manager. And it's proposed, based upon negotiations that have been concluded, that he receive a new contract for a five-year period of time. The first year of the new contract will begin on July first, two thousand eighteen. His salary as of that date shall increase from two hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred fifteen dollars annual base salary to a new annual base salary of two hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Succeeding years, he will receive, in one year's time, a two percent increase and in the third year, another two percent increase. In the fourth and fifth years, there will be zero percent increase. The only other changes to the prior contract are an increase in the benefit package from thirteen hundred dollars a month to fifteen hundred dollars a month commencing July first, two thousand eighteen, with an additional two hundred dollar per month increase on July first, two thousand nineteen, to a total of seventeen hundred dollars in the cafeteria plan for benefits. Other than that, the duties remain the same. Severance remains the same. All the provisions remain the same. And the negotiator for the city council had recommended approval, and it's before you for action at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd approve, I would make a motion to approve the new contract and also share a comment that in addition to being city manager, he's the city engineer, the director of public works, and most importantly, he supervises the activities at the senior center on a regular basis. So it's with pleasure that I would make the motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can we add not fixing sprinklers to the negligence statute?
How many acre feet have we lost? So motion and a second, and no further discussion. Let's vote on this one. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. That's approved unanimously. Congratulations. We have you for five more years. Don't even try leaving.
We're looking for a few more rolls to add to your job description.
You forgot to mention Human Resources Director.
Oh, Human Resources Director, Labor Negotiator.
Oh, that's because Barbara was promoted.
And volunteer fireman, I think.
Okay, item number fourteen, Designating a Voting Delegate. I think that's your fifth job.
Well, this one usually, last year, Matt Protim, Phil Duper went and.
He gets two votes.
Yes.
But he already gets a vote for being the local president, right?
That's right.
So you need to be the voting member for us.
Yes. Yes, I usually attend, so.
Yeah. Is that agreeable?
Unless any of you want to go and be.
I think we're putting enough into that. So you're it. So we get two votes this year, so I hope you get some hope and change.
No, you see, they all vote the same thing and yes.
So you're just ciphers. Okay. Reports of councilmen.
I don't ever report, but a question. Can you give us an update on the California street progress?
I'm happy to say that the construction has started. If you go out there, the California street is closed from Redlands Boulevard to Park Avenue. They are excavated channel. They are delivered a pre-cast box culvert to the site. Today, they set the form to cast the transition structure between the existing bridge to the new box culvert. So they will pour that, they will cast it, and then when this, when this cure, then they will put the box culvert down and then tie it together. The existing pedestrian bridge that was there on Redlands Boulevard, we relocate that to the Heritage Park. We can raise it to make it a platform for viewing for the locomotive. So we saved everything. So we're gonna put in the footing, put the bridge on top, remove the chain link fence, and you can walk up and look at inside the locomotive.
Yeah, they'll be moving the box culverts into place later this week. They'll be moving the box culverts into place later this week.
Yes, yes.
And those, if you go and look at them, they weigh over fifty thousand pounds each.
They're big, yeah.
Very heavy.
And just so I know what to tell people, the projected reopening of California is in September?
Yes, September third. And the box culvert, the street pavement rehab, pavement will be completed before that. But the longest lead time on this project is a traffic signal pole. So that's the thing that we might have to wait. We'll have to end up putting a temporary pole for a traffic signal, but.
And can you update us on the moving the California Highway Patrol offices on the Redlands Boulevard?
They have submitted their E I R and are in property negotiations, and that's as far as we know. I understand that they're, through their staff, is that this is, this is a done deal and they should be in the next year or so moving from the station in San Bernardino to there.
Okay, good, good. And the, is it KB Homes that, that new development? Yeah, and how's that going?
They already paved the street. They already paved the parking lot for the model. So they'll be, they'll submit the plan for a plan check for the model itself. And already approved the grading plan, so the model should be built in time now.
Yeah, they're through plan checks, so they're under, they should be under construction shortly with the model. They're doing pre-sales, and then they're finishing up. You can see kind of the streets cut out. They have a little bit of electrical, the streetlights and that, and then they'll start pouring curb and gutter and.
So they're building the models, and then they'll build the rest of the development as there's buyers? Or are they gonna put it all up?
No, they do, they'll do it in phases. Typically, the phases are five to seven houses at a time, unless the market really heats up and then they'll expand the pace of the phasing.
Thank you.
Any other reports of councilmen? I can report that Confire, I know you've all been waiting on tender hooks about this, but Confire has voted to extend an R F P to the city of Victorville so that they can get services as an independent fire department, having broken their relationship with the county fire department. So that's just a little update. We're trying to keep continuity of the dispatching services in the county as much as possible. Any other reports? Reports of officers, anything else besides item fifteen? We do have a request for a comment, so I think we'll start with the Assistant City Manager's report, and then we'll take the public comment.
Last week, on the twentieth, there was a meeting at LAFCO discussing the change of the sphere of influence of the City of Loma Linda and the City of Colton. To define that, the sphere of influence is essentially the area for future planning and growth management, not a change in the city limits. And with that, the original request to LAFCO was to change the sphere of influence for this property, which is, for reference here, this is kind of the South Hills, Ritchie Canyon Road, a little piece, Scotch Lane, and then kind of the backside of Loma Linda. For this piece of property, which is locked out of Loma Linda by Measure V, we're not allowed to do any kind of road access or anything into this area, to transfer the sphere from the City of Loma Linda to the City of Colton for future activity. When this was brought before LAFCO, they requested that in addition to this, the Scotch Lane area and this piece of property down along Riverside County also be included in that. Once again, the city doesn't provide water, street, there's all private roads, sewer, anything out there. And we're, we are, the only piece of road we take care of is that little segment of Ritchie Canyon Road. And we are, through Measure V, prohibited from making any kind of connection through the South Hills to serve this area.
And there's a minor correction. The part that was changed, the sphere of influence in the light blue section, is the lower trapezoid and not the entire rectangle.
Not that piece, correct. This piece here.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. Anyway, the LAFCO requests this area be included in as part of the sphere. Once again, these areas still remain and will remain until requested to move out of the City of Loma Linda. The assumption is that this property owner will request, through a development process, to go to the City of Colton. Any change in city limits for this guy would, this area here would require a vote of the residents because there are more than five residents in that area. If there is some master plan development for this area in the future, you know, with the sphere, it kind of addresses a master plan use. One final piece is, this is also Redlands Unified School District, and the sphere of influence and any changes on that have no impact on the school district and who goes to which school.
And is the, is the vote by parcel owners or by residents? If it is, if there's a de-annexation, re-annexation?
I believe it is by, I'm not certain, but I believe it is by resident. I'm not certain on that.
Resident electors? If they haven't registered to vote, they don't get to vote?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's.
I'm trying to remember what we did here, and it was, I believe it was resident.
I think it's parcel owners, but I don't know.
I could be wrong. But it, this, any change in boundaries would be.
Well, I'm gonna talk, but to answer your question, the letter that we received
Yeah.
said landowners and/or registered voters.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thanks. That's good.
But once again, any change in here then would require a vote to move from Loma Linda to Colton. So at this point, the only area that we anticipate moving is this area here and not any portion of Scotch Lane or this little area down to the south against Riverside County. Any questions?
So what are the potential implications of this, positive and negative? Does it add any liability to the city?
For the city, it does not add any liability to us. As far as the area, this is all uninhabited. It doesn't make any difference maybe for the fire guys if there's a brush fire out there. The inhabited portion will still remain in the city. We'll still providing the services as, you know, as we do. They'll still remain as part of the city until they choose to vote themselves out of the city. The positives for us, it, you know, it kind of does something with this, with this area that really is undevelopable. The negatives is that the Ritchie Canyon, and I think the residents there at the meeting, you know, were pretty vocal about that. Ritchie Canyon is a very busy road with a lot of traffic. And any development tied to that, that piece that theoretically would go to Colton, Crystal Ridge is up against here.
Where's Ritchie Canyon Road in this?
Ritchie Canyon Road is right here, and then it kind of goes up this way and then ties into Barton Road out here. So this is that, that Crystal Ridge development up against Colton out in here.
So what questions are there that I don't know to ask that should be contemplated?
Right, I think for, the, the number one is, you know, these, these residents will remain in the city of Loma Linda until they, they choose to leave. Um, and I think that's an important one for the city and for the residents. And then, you know, secondly, this, this becomes an unknown to us as planning shifts to Colton. And what are, just like we did with Area D, Colton will do whatever they do with that area in their, in their planning process.
So there's no real risk to us?
A- as far as liability or, or loss of revenue or a-
All of the above.
All, all the above, no. And, um, the, the only real loss would be is, you know, if these, these, this pocket here in Scotch Lane decides Colton is a better place to live, we would lose whatever sales tax, you know, or, sorry, property taxes associated with that area. And, uh, I'm, I believe there's twenty-five, thirty, forty residents in there. It's not a, uh, the city's not gonna go broke one way or the other.
And, and, and what has prompted this change?
The request for the change came from this property owner. Um, they, they would like to, Arizona State University owns this. They would like to, uh, develop or do something with that to, to generate revenue as part of their endowment. And so this, this area triggered the activity. LAFCO, because they don't, as, as a process, don't like pockets and don't like pieces that aren't directly connected to other places, wanted to include this piece as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, uh, we have a public comment, so. Mr. Green, Dennis Green.
Mister Mayor, City Council, everybody, thanks for listening to me. I live on Scotch Lane. Uh, I don't know who these LAFCO people are. Uh, I don't know what power they have. Nobody on my street, I've talked to the majority of my neighbors, nobody wants the sphere of influence changed. That's their idea. Not a single person on my street asked for that. Okay, that was their idea. Hopefully you folks can listen to us and stop it. I don't know. We like Loma Linda. We like exactly like what it is. We like it being rural. We like being in Loma Linda. We like taking care of ourselves. I know you guys wanna do stuff for us, but everybody I've talked to, the reason they moved right there was the way it was. This opens up way too many possibilities. All it takes is a developer from Arizona State University and Big Law years to come in and say, "We want water, we want sewer," and pretty soon there's two hundred houses, three hundred houses there instead of forty. That's our major concern is one per- it takes one person, changes everybody else. You folks, I know the mayor wrote a letter, uh, saying that he wanted the two hundred and three acres done. Uh, it sounds like a done deal already, but my concern is Scotch Lane. How, how, how can they do what they say they're gonna do?
Well, I can answer it, 'cause I was actually at the meeting where they took the vote. They've already done it. Um, the vote was taken, and, um-
In opposition of all the people that live, that were there, everybody that talked, 'cause I, my neighbor went to the meeting. Everybody that talked was in opposition, and then they just said, "We don't care." "We, we listen to you, but we're gonna do what we wanna do." That's not right.
And let me, let me explain what their reasoning was. Whether or not we agree with it is, is something else, but... LAFCO's responsibility, they're called the Local Area Formation Commission. Their responsibility is to basically, uh, judge what borders there should be of local agencies. So, um, city is one of those agencies, and the city boundaries are in their jurisdiction. And these things are, every county has a LAFCO of sorts. They have the responsibility for making certain that every area has an ability to receive services, city services. And the issue that we've always had with Scotch Lane is that it's, it's somewhat amputated from the rest of Loma Linda's services. So the natural place where it would get its services is coming down Ritchie Canyon Road, which belongs ninety-plus percent to Colton, and some of it's in county pockets. This project just due north of the Scotch Lane pro- uh, properties, they asked the city to issues a, a letter of support for a change in the sphere of influence. They asked the city of Colton for a letter of support to the sphere of influence change. They got letters from both cities saying they support that change of that trapezoidal light blue area just north of you.
Correct, yes, I agree.
They didn't ask about Scotch Lane, you're right. They didn't ask you, they didn't ask us. But hearing rumors of it, the, the Colton City Council actually took a vote opposing the change in the sphere of influence. So it, it just kind of puzzles me why they asked us for approval on the northern, the property north of you, and they asked Colton for their approval of that change. Ostensibly because they would say, you know, "If we don't get approval of both sides, we're not going to proceed." But on Scotch Lane, they didn't ask us at all. We took no position because we didn't consider it.
And they didn't ask us either.
And they didn't ask you, and then they, and they didn't ask Colton, but Colton volunteered, uh, "No, we don't want it." So they went ahead and voted in anyway, based on the fact, and this is what I learned at that meeting, they have the jurisdiction to do it with or without the support of it. The sphere of influence change, they consider to be just a very minor thing. They don't consider it to be anything approaching annexation. They call it sphere of influence, so it's basically, what it says is that any planning for the future for that area is Colton's responsibility according to LAFCO. It's not our responsibility anymore because we can't provide the services that they would need if anything were to happen. So you're right, a developer can come in, buy up that land south of you, subdivide it, you know, a hundred ways, and outvote you, if that's how it's done. But if it's done by lots and owners of lots, then you could be outvoted. If it's done by residents, and there are no residents there, you would win the vote. And I don't know which it is, and I think you need to find that out, you know, for your own protection. But there's, there's no anticipated motion on that thing as far as the eye can see. The city of Loma Linda took no position other than the fact that the city, um, staff wrote a letter to, to LAFCO reiterating that we have no access to provide services directly from Loma Linda, which is a factual statement.
Correct.
And, um, that, and that's it. And they made the decision despite the fact, and they discussed it in great detail, that nobody requested this, but the, the LAFCO staff thought it was the right thing to do, and the LAFCO board voted it in. So that, so you're in the sphere of influence of Colton as we speak. It's already been done. It's too late to change that, but- No, there's nobody from LAFCO, because I guess the, you know, we didn't ask them to come. This was just a comment on an update. But I'm just, I'm just explaining this because he asked the question, and I was there at the meeting, and I was somewhat surprised at their ability to just unilaterally do this, but that's what they did.
So you're saying there's, like, nothing you can do?
Well, I couldn't do anything at the meeting, because I'm not a, I'm not a commissioner on LAFCO.
Yeah, but there's, like, you can't say that you're against changing the sphere-
What I told them was the truth of the matter is that, is that the city council of Loma Linda has taken no position on it, 'cause it never came up as a, as an agendized discussion item. And I can't, as a, you know, as the mayor, speak for the whole council, so I told them, "We've taken no position." And they also knew at the time that Colton City Council voted no, and they did it anyway. So, so they clearly have the power to do it, and they did it. But it doesn't mean anything unless the next shoe drops.
Well, there also is a door, and that's, we don't want that door open. There's a door open now to development.
Why, why is Colton in opposition?
I don't know. They, uh, from what I heard, and I, I wasn't there, but I heard that it came up, uh, for a vote, and there was no discussion. They just voted the staff recommendation, straight up.
I believe there's significant opposition from the Ritchie Canyon residents who feel impacted already with the tra- the traffic they can, as well as there's some challenge in utilities is there as well. But I think there's so- some opposition due to just the current impact to those residents as it stands currently, is my understanding.
So that's what happened.
I- is this an item for us to vote on, or simply a report?
It's a report.
And, and so, what I hear you saying is that you fear there's gonna be some massive development that's going to clog things up, and that's just a speculative fear? Or do you have, is there a basis for that concern?
Well, the, the two hundred and three acres north of us, the trapezoid?
Yeah.
That's gonna get developed, guaranteed. That's exactly why they did what they did. Okay, is because they wanna develop where, uh, Crystal Ridge ends at Loma Linda, uh, city line. Now they're gonna continue that into the, into the, you know, Loma Linda. Same with, uh, Prado, same with Sha, I know, I never say this right, Shadid or Shadad. All those streets end at Loma Linda. And so what happens is all that, those people wanna develop and make houses up there.
Okay, and what's the downside to that?
Pardon me?
What's the downside? Why are you opposed to developing that property?
To that is fine. It's where we live, in that area, that nobody asked for anything. Nobody wanna do anything. They just took it on their own to say, "Well, this is what you need," and we don't want or need that.
And you don't want it because?
We like it like it is. We like being, we like our services that we get from Loma Linda, which is like basically nothing. Being truthful, we don't get water, we don't get lights, we don't get-
You all have wells and so on.
We have our own wells, we take care of our own little property. You guys got a contract with, uh, San Bernardino County sheriffs, and they patrol that area. The fire guys come out.
But you do understand a property owner does have some right to develop their land. I mean, I'd, I'd like to develop it be-
Develop it in the rural way that it is right now. If you want, if you have a well, you gotta dig a well, and you make your own-
I mean, I'd, I'd like to see a lot of the orange groves back that have been ripped out, but i- it's just the reality. And, and so I'm-
But it's being, to me, it's being shoved down our throat with, with no say-so. And to me, you folks were, seemed like my way out, maybe, you know, a way to stop it or slow it down or something. Because the next thing is annexation, and then we're not in Loma Linda anymore.
The next thing is what?
Annexation to Col- that's what this opens up, is that right now they can bring it up for a vote and say, "We wanna be Colt."
But it, it sounds like you're somewhat protected from that because they voted no.
Why does Col-?
Already. They already voted no, which I don't think they're hot, hot to annex you at this moment, because there's no telling how far down the line.
That door is open.
Yeah.
And we want, we wanna be Loma Linda. We like it like it is. We would like your help somehow, I don't know. You're saying that you can't help.
So who do you speak, you speak on behalf of yourself?
I've talked to the majority of my neighbors, at least ten of them.
But they're not here?
Uh, like, I didn't get to go to the, I wanted to go to the meeting Wednesday or whenever it was last week. I was out of state. Majority of my people, the people I talked to, they have jobs. They're on vacation. This is like the worst time of year for all this to happen, 'cause nobody's around. But I, not that I'm speaking for these folks, but everybody that I've talked to, and I'm, that's at least ten, if not more. And that's like the full-time residents. There's a lot of renters there. But all the full-time residents, there's not a person that I talked to that wanted this, and they are against it. If it takes me, we'll get up, we'll all come in here if that's what it needs to be. I mean, they asked me, I got phone calls, saying there's a council meeting, they're gonna talk about it today. Could you go talk to us?
So, Mister Mayor, I, I don't feel qualified to vote on this yet. I don't think I have enough information to-
There's no, there's no vote on, on the agenda anymore.
And I understand that, so-
Yeah, and there's no vote. We could, we could arrange a vote, and it would be symbolic only, 'cause it's after the fact. They've already changed the sphere of influence. See, what, the basic truth is that this area has been on LAFCO's radar for, for a long time, as an amputated, unserviced corner of a city that can't provide the service. And they, they have regretted, essentially, they're regretting ever putting that in Loma Linda. So, so LAFCO has, took this opportunity when Arizona State came along to say, "Oh, well, we'll just throw Scotch Lane into the deal, because we've wanted to do it for decades anyway." And, uh, and that's what happened. And they apparently have the power to do it over opposition. And the, the commissioners on LAFCO heard all of the different stories, and they, and they voted to, to make the change.
So we have, we have no authority in any of this?
Correct.
And it sounds like the homeowners have no, have had their input, and it was, it was-
They lost, yeah, yeah.
So it's kind of a done deal?
It's a done deal, uh, but it's only, and it's, it's not annexation, it's only sphere of influence. And, and they assured everybody, they assured the commissioners, that this does not, is not tantamount to annexation, and that the only circumstance that would come along is if a developer came in for that southern section of the Scotch Lane property. Do you, does anybody know who owns that?
Uh, no.
'Cause that's the real way to prevent it, just buy up the property. The southern half of, no, I'm talking about the green box. The green box, all of those little chopped up pieces above that line are owned by a bunch of people, but there's a, there are two, there are two lots south of that line that somebody owns, and they could always develop it.
And it's, well, it's my understanding they're already, this is back like ten, fifteen years ago, that there are already plans that have been approved.
There haven't been any plans approved, 'cause we would've been the ones who did it.
If we, if we go back in, in history, the, the way Scotch Lane came into the city, probably what triggered a lot of the hillside conservation ten, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, there was discussion of development throughout here.
Like a golf course.
And then it was going to tie into Mountain View, and I think Oakwood, and then come back. And this was going to be the access point from Ritchie Canyon into the city. That's one of the reasons that Measure V blocked, sorry, that Measure V blocked access directly from Ritchie Canyon to any city emanating, or any street emanating in the city of Loma Linda. So this was created as part of this, and then essentially Measure V amputated that into the future. And so we, you know, we have these guys, we serve them, but LAFCO, in that process now, wants to shift that. And I think, as the mayor said, this was a, a, a done deal on their part. We're just, we're reporting the news. We're not making, not making the news, we're making decisions.
So what does sphere of influence mean? I don't know what that means.
All that means is influence over, it, it, it gives you an opportunity for future annexation, and it gives you say in the future development. But if it's, for example, if we have sphere of influence on our east side, that is in the county. So, for example, the Korean church is being developed in the county area in our sphere of influence, and the only thing we're involved with is supplying basically the water and sewer. So we made a pre-annexation agreement with them that we would provide water and sewer if they agreed to eventual annexation. But that's because the, the county is the other counterparty. But if it's us, then if they want to develop without annexation, they have to come to us. If they wanna develop with annexation, then they go to the owner of the sphere, which is, at this point, Colton. So what they do-
It's not though, because they already moved it to Loma Linda, I thought.
No, no, it's, no, in this case, this was Loma Linda, and it has been moved into the sphere of influence of Colton. So all of this-
Is that what Colton objected to?
Col- Colton objected to the green box. They agreed to the blue box. They disagreed with the green box.
Being in the sphere of influence of Loma Linda.
Being in the sphere of influence of Colton, 'cause it's always been in our sphere of influence. This is all Loma- This is all Loma Linda. It's still Loma Linda.
The, the part of this that's confusing to me, I guess, is that all this happens and we don't know what the heck's going on. And it sounds like the property owners had some concerns, and, uh, their concerns were not, I, I assume they were considered, but at least-
Yeah, well, I get the impression Lafco could obliterate Loma Linda completely with, over our objection, it sounds like.
Well, no. The sphere of influence they have authority over, but annexations, uh, as far as city limits go, uh, do take, cannot occur without kind of a lengthy process. I was trying to check whether it was the property owner or voters, and that depends on how many people reside in the affected area. If there are fewer than twelve voters, it's considered uninhabited, and then they go by assessed value and property owners. Uh, if there are more than twelve voters, then it's, it's by a, a vote of the residents.
Of the resident electors. So if they're not registered, then they don't get a vote.
Presumably. I, I haven't read the whole codes, just, I found one quick summary that mentions-
I predict that everybody will register.
I'll make sure of that.
Why, how come, how come Colton had to take a vote on it?
They didn't have to, they volunteered to vote.
So it was a voluntary vote?
They got wind of the fact that, that Lafco was planning this sphere of influence change in the green box. And they took a, a symbolic, apparently, vote opposing it, and it didn't matter.
It's not clear to me yet. No, I, I, I may not be the brightest bulb in the chandelier, but I still don't understand sphere of influence, and how an agency like Lafco can just decide this is the sphere of influence, without any kind of communication with the cities involved.
Well, they communicated with us on the blue box, and we agreed.
When, when did we do that?
Well, you were, you were, you were excluded from the discussion, so-
I was what?
You were conflicted out of it, that's why you don't remember what we did, because you, you went home.
According to the dates on the letter, they were fall of last year, two thousand and seven.
Yeah, you went-
Conflict with, oh, university.
It's because the university has the potential to gain from the, from the sale of the property. So that's why you don't remember it, but we, uh, Ovi and I, well, that's my other question. My other question is, can it, now that the city of Loma Linda has done its part, can they now participate in the discussions of it, having been conflicted before the action was taken?
Well, there are no actions before this time to take. Certainly not tonight, there's no action on the agenda. Any, if there were future action, we would have to revisit that potential for conflict, if it even exists in the future. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, from what I understand, there are no further actions on the part of Loma Linda. So we're done, so-
So we have a homeowner expressing concerns that makes sense. But if I'm understanding, we, this is just announcing to us a decision that Lafco made, that we have no influence over, and obviously they have no additional influence over as well. So why are we even talking about it?
Cause we need to know.
We're, we're just, we're just reporting the news. We're not bringing you anything to do, we're just telling you what happened.
And what if we don't want, what if we don't want that sphere of influence?
Lots of things happen in the news that I don't want to happen.
There's nothing you can do about it, in other words.
I'm with you, it makes no sense to me. I mean, I understand what people are-
So you're saying there's nothing I can do, or something I should do, is there like a-
With regard to the sphere of influence, it's a done deal. With regard to future annexation, there's plenty you can do, and I think you just, you know, stay tuned. I don't think anything's gonna happen until you start, until whoever's the landowner, south of Scotch Lane, the road, until that landowner starts, uh, going to Colton with plans.
I had a question.
Until then, you're-
It's still city of Loma Linda.
Still city of Loma Linda.
So they gotta submit the plans to you.
Correct.
Correct, uh, but, but, because the sphere of influence is in Colton, they can submit their plans entirely to Colton and not to us.
So they don't have to go by your building regulations or any of that stuff, they're just gonna be-
Before, only if there's an annexation. See, what they do is they, they present what is called a pre, pre-annexation zoning change, something like that, and that, that is all that is done prior to the annexation, and then they go through the specific plan and the development of the project after the annexation. So they can't really do anything, other than present a plan to, um, to zone it under Colton's sphere. So it's, it's kind of complicated, and I don't understand it all, but, you know-
So, so the, the take-home message, if I understand it, is-
Stay tuned.
Going to happen, uh, at this point.
To Scotch Lane.
To Scotch Lane. Uh, and if a developer gets a burn under their saddle to start developing south or north of Scotch Lane, then that will open up fresh hearings in which the residents can-
At Colton.
At Colton.
Just, just like we did on the east side of town, when we annexed in the areas that they're building houses in now, that was in the county sphere of influence. So in that process, we had to come up with a pre-zoning, financial analysis to show we could provide service. In that area, there was, there were some residents, it was small enough that, that the residents, um, it was less than the twelve. But, um, before we could approve any plans, before we could take action, that area had to be annexed into the city of Loma Linda.
Right.
So the same process will happen in that area to the north of Scotch Lane, to the south, and theoretically, conceivably, if everybody in Scotch Lane votes to go to Colton, the, the area in the sphere will then be annexed into the city, or the segment of, will be annexed into, and then it will be developed by Colton standards.
So the bad news is, there's nothing we can do tonight. The good news is, if, if a developer comes in and wants to put houses on small lots and have a massive development, then this all opens up again, and you have input. Am I correct?
Yeah, essentially. An illustrative question. Was there a vote of the people when we annexed the Gardner tract and Brenmar? They were in our sphere. They were donut holes. And I know this was, this was way back about eleven, eleven, ten or eleven years ago.
I guess I was here, and I'm trying to remember, uh-
Cause I don't remember there being a vote of the people. I know there was some kind of, Lafco and the state were on a big push to close all the donut holes, and we annexed, and I don't recall whether the people had any say in it or not. I know there were some complaints from Brenmar about it.
The process is not a vote of approval, it's a protest vote. And there were not sufficient protests, uh, exceeding fifty percent. I, I believe that's the process that did occur. Somebody else might know better.
Yeah, and, and at least in that circumstance, there was a prospect of better services. And they, in fact, that's what came true, because the county, you know, uh, compared to our city, services was neglectful. So we, we at least dangled, you know, curb and gutter, and, and, you know, lights, and whatever else, and, and a park, and-
Sewer.
And, yeah, sewer, and Brenmar got a park, um, out of it, so.
But who's to decide what's better, as far as the services?
Well, in that case, it was, a majority did not protest, so that's why it came through.
Okay, so we have to stay united.
But there was exactly the same issue that you were saying. There were, there were some people who stood up here and said, we like our rural, we like our, you know, you, you may think that we're substandard, but it's exactly what we want, we moved in because of that. And they were overruled in the circumstance of Brenmar, and that's because the protest vote was less than fifty percent.
So we need more than fifty percent-
Apparently, that's-
When you go to annex, to Colton.
I think the point is, you could kill it just by the vote of the folks living there.
Just kill the annexation, not the sphere of influence.
Yeah, and you can live under the sphere of Colton forever and still be in Loma Linda, as long as there's no annexation.
Your address will still stay Loma Linda.
Yes, and I'm, this is all brand new to me, and-
How are you gonna report this out to your neighbors?
Um, nothing good. Not gonna talk, I mean-
The good news is, nothing can happen. A developer can't come in and just start building houses, and, until there's a process that takes place. So, you know, I think that's good news, you don't have to worry about that happening.
Right now, though, like, let's say the guy on the bottom that owns that property wants to develop something, and we're not annexed to Colton, they still have to come to you folks.
Yeah, and they, and Measure V would prevent any development.
Yeah, the, the blue trapezoid is still within the city of Loma Linda city limits, so they cannot develop it by going to Colton, even though it's in the Colton sphere of influence. The sphere of influence is just a precursor to-
Annexation.
Changing the, the city limits to annex to Colton, and until that were, unless and until that were to occur, Loma Linda retains jurisdiction over all development within that area.
Yeah.
And then what, and the sphere, what stops them from annexing us, throwing them in, in a big pile like they just did?
Well, it's the vote, you know, that's the issue. There's, there's a protest vote, but they would also have to have somebody who's making a petition to change the annexation, because they can't do that on their own. They can do the sphere on their own, but they can't do an annexation on their own.
Well, guaranteed, the blue section is gonna ask for annexation.
Yes.
Does the blue section actually touch Scotch Lane? It's a few miles away, so some properties, but not most of them.
Like, well, if you look at it, basically, there's only, uh, one that goes from Scotch Lane all the way up to the blue.
Okay, so only one property.
But-
But I don't think those guys with blue can ask to annex other people's properties. It, it's gonna be to their own detriment to do that.
Sphere of influence, to me, it's all one big glob now, or one big-
No, there's, there's no presumption of globular connection. You're, you're separate. They're all separate-
Exactly. I think that, I think you're, you're mischaracterizing that just because Arizona State wants to develop in Colton, they're gonna pull you along with it, and that's not the case in this. They cannot do that. You're still gonna have a choice as to whether you're gonna go to Colton or not.
Even though we're under the sphere-
Sphere, correct.
We're a separate entity-
Correct.
Away from that other-
Correct. They will not want, trust me, they will not wanna add you to it, because all they're gonna do is make their chances of going to Colton significantly harder, cause now you get a chance to have a say in what they do there, and that's the last thing they wanna do.
Only when it comes to annexation.
And, and development. And development. They can't, they can't develop unless it gets annexed.
It's under Loma Linda, and you guys got pretty good stringent laws.
Well, they, they can't, they can't develop your property because you own it.
Right. But I'm, development is slow in that area because of all the rules and regulations, which is-
I think, no, the reason development is slow in there, cause there is no services. It's, it would cost extremely challenging for someone to put in water and sewer over there. But someone like Arizona State has a lot more money to do what they wanna do there than where you guys are at. So the chances of development around you is extremely slim.
So how do I stay apprised of all this stuff that's going on? I mean, I got a letter three weeks ago about this was gonna happen. And three weeks isn't enough time to do a lot of stuff in government. So how do I stay apprised of somebody putting a, you know, are you guys gonna send me a letter? Are they gonna send me a letter? Do they gotta put up a notice someplace?
We're gonna be waiting for the same letter.
Development requires a public noticing, and then that noticing typically requires a, a letter to all property owners within either a three or five hundred foot radius. So basically, anybody that would be close to or abutting that would be notified, and that would also be publicly noticed through whatever mechanism, uh, Colton has for that.
And if you're, if you're beyond five hundred feet, you're not even gonna get a notice.
Right.
So you might not even know. We, we don't know what Relent's does, even though they're right next to us, they don't notify us, so.
Well, it just seems like we are cut out of the loop now.
You know, you are, you were right. When the mayor brought to my attention that they're adding that, I said, why, and how did that come about? And he just explained that it was a decision made by the staff, and I was shocked, because I said, this wasn't part of what was agreed to. Scotch Lane wasn't even addressed, because that even come close to that land, so that's why it surprised me. But like, he just explained, Lafco has been eyeing that piece of land there for a long time and wanna do it, but I, if I understand it correctly, it sounds to me like, if the point ever comes for you guys to actually go into Colton, two things have to happen. One is, a big developer has to be buying and developing land right next to all of you, not just one of you. And then you would all have to vote that, yes, you would like to go to Colton, and I just don't see that happening for another twenty or thirty years.
That would be nice, but I'll see. Okay, thanks for your time.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it'll ever happen.
Uh, that would be nice.
And, by the way, if you, if you wanna get your neighbors together and get an explanation, I, I'm willing to explain what I just explained to you, to them.
So we set up a meeting with you?
If you want to, I'll, I'll, I'll go and-
I've got quite a few people that would probably like that.
Okay.
And for everyone's clarity, the Lafco action in no way changes the services, the law enforcement or fire services uh, to those areas, stays the same until some further action.
According to Lafco, I should point out, they claim that Colton police services that area, not the sheriff. No, it's not true.
It's San Bernardino County Sheriff.
Our sheriff is right here.
They got the Loma Linda logo, but it's county sheriff.
Okay, well, that's what the staff was saying. I was surprised when they said that, but-
We were very clear to them that the, our sheriff serviced that area.
Yeah, we've never had a Colton.
And you're closer to the, to their fire department, but we have a shared-
Right, well, the fire department, yes, but-
We have a shared command staff of our two fire departments anyway, so, and we have mutual aid agreements, so we cover each other all the time, so there's nothing unusual about that.
You're telling me that if you have an emergency, and our sheriff unit is down by Beaumont, they have to go all the way across Loma Linda and all through Ritchie Canyon to answer your call? That tells me that your service call is not very good. That would take him at least twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes to answer your call.
Well, it'd take forty-five minutes during rush hour.
Not more. So that, to me, is an argument for, you may wanna deal with Colton rather than-
No, it's, the way, the way it is now, it's, it's fine.
That's fine, and I understand that.
It's not like taking that long. I've had to call them a few times, and they get out there fairly quick. And it's always, we've had the neighborhood patrol, whatever they're called, they come out there once in a blue moon. But it's always been the sheriff that comes out. I've never seen a Colton. Okay, thanks again, and, uh-
Let me know.
A few people here.
Yeah, let me know if you want me to talk to them.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get something going and see what I can do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, yes.
I have, I have the, uh, the, the new sheriff in town.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, uh, I wanna let you guys know that I'll be moving on, I'll be moving to the city of Highland.
A demotion?
Pardon me?
We've had prior, uh, people who got that demotion, so what did you do to deserve that?
I don't know. I don't talk enough. And that, that move will be effective July seventh, and, uh, I wanted to thank you guys for letting me be a part of your family for this last year. I greatly appreciate you guys, Jarb and his staff. And my, um, replacement is Lieutenant Matt Griffith. He's been with the department about twenty-seven years. Uh, he's coming from our courts division. He's got a lot of experience there, I think he's been there the last four years. He's worked contract cities-
Courts.
Courts, or court services division? Oh, courts, yeah. And, um, he's worked contract cities before, Rancho, Yucapu, and Highland, so he comes experienced. He'll be a good fit for you guys. So thank you very much for having me.
Well, we wish you Godspeed, you've been good for us, so thank you for your help.
Absolutely. And we do go to Scotch Lane, I've answered lots of Mr. Green's emails.
So, Mr. Griffith, we'll be seeing you a lot.
Absol- absolutely, thank you very much. I, I look forward to, uh, to joining the team and, and serving the city. I to, I told them earlier, I actually lived here, uh, uh, I don't know, maybe fifteen years ago, when I was a, when I was a lot younger. I lived on Lawton Avenue here for a couple of years, so.
It's a good street to live on.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely beautiful. I, I loved every minute of it, so.
But it's the- But it's the third, third longest street in Loma Linda, so you, you could live two miles from me.
Yeah, it was very, it was very quiet and I liked it that way. Yeah, thank you.
Welcome back. So, anything else? Uh, I think Anderson, no, I think Barton's the longest and Redlands Boulevard is the second longest. And, and Lawton is the third longest. You know, he's got down to the foot how long each street is in the whole town, how wide they are. So he could tell you exactly how many yards of carpet it would take to cover all the streets. Yes, there's a comment from Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I would say to the Scotch Lane people, make sure that everybody there is registered so they can vote if this comes up. And to watch the agendas. Uh, the agendas are all online. Watch the Colton agendas, the Lafco agendas, and the Loma Linda agendas. She'll send them.
No, we have, we have, if you want to be on a distribution list, we email every council agenda to, to a list of people. Colton will do the same thing. I think on their website, you can go sign up and every city council agenda you'll get by email. And you can monitor them that way.
The other thing I wanted to mention, I left off something very important in my presentation and that is that in two thousand seventeen, there were forty-five thousand cubic yards of, of water put into the ground, both from the state water project and locally. So far in two thousand eighteen, there's twelve thousand, so it's quite a bit less. Although the state water project, uh, state water hasn't started to flow yet, which will be in the, in the summer and, and later on. But, uh, the, the water year is from October one to September thirty, so. And I didn't le- leave those, uh, statistics with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Reports of officers.
Fire season's here. We do have a battalion chief and a zone two strike team up, uh, Northern California already. So for those that you that live out in the, in the grasslands, be aware, we're in the season.
Okay, then the city council agenda is adjourned and we will move on to our housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on non-agenda items, the housing authority? Hearing none. The consent calendar. There's a motion. There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Any opposition? Hearing none. It's approved unanimously. Any member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none. We're adjourned. And that finishes our, all of our agendas for this evening. Thank you all for coming.